We'll open the meeting for the artificial intelligence and all that stuff. My name's Hovey Harmon, chair of the board.
Catherine Turnowski.
Mark Casper.
All righty, and that's we'll start off with the agenda. First thing we've got is Chief Young.
This is just the office, New Hampshire Office Highway Safety Grant Agreement that we have done traditionally over the last three, four years since I've been here. We were awarded eighty five hundred dollars, which is the same amount of money from them that was two thousand twenty four. This grant runs basically from their fiscal year, the federal government, October first of two thousand and five to September thirtieth of the twenty six. So these grants won't even begin until August of the fall. These grants are for various patrols such as driving intoxicated, seatbelt violations, texting, stuff like that. So there's different mobilizations throughout the year that are mandatory, and these funds will just help us to put offices on the road for these grants, which is no cost to the taxpayer. So part of the agreement is just it has to be approved by the select board and then just requires a signature and some initials by the chair chairman of the board.
Any questions?
All right, so you want to sign this later or you I mean, is this the whole package?
And I'll make a motion to accept it and move forward with it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Take care of that.
Thank you.
Multiple signatures on your way.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, you could do it afterwards. Everything that has a yellow tab is required either a signature or a initial.
I'll take care of that. All right, we've taken care of that. Moving on, correspondence discussion, ex officio, media reports, Cat, planning board, eight mate.
The last update is not substantially different. There continues to be progress on Muddy Rivers describing specifically fence safety issues, blocking parking from where patrons would be looking at the flow of foot traffic and the activities that will happen on the property. And there will be more added to the drawings to clarify so that what ends up happening is in alignment with the plan that was approved. So it's same as the last meeting, just more updates specifically focused on safety and the type of fencing to be appropriate for a vehicle backing up. That was primary.
All right, anything else on that?
No, that's it.
All right, Mark, Concom.
Concom. Yesterday evening, we had a an hour long meeting with the Biscataqua Region Estuaries Partnership and UNH. And the meeting were with the representatives from PREP and UNH to discuss critical issues surrounding stormwater management and water basin health in the Biscataqua River region, excuse me. Discussion centered around stormwater mitigation, some scientific findings, right? And what I thought was most interesting about this was that some of the impacts were that were front and center were septic systems. Twenty three percent of the of the issue is attributable to septic systems, which is pretty amazing and something worth noting for future development. And as far as any other commentary from Concom after that hour long meeting, there were just it was noted that the Attorney General will be touring the property at Vernon Family Farm on the twenty eighth. And that was it.
What was the issue with the septic's? Were the old septic systems that were failing?
As far as.
The twenty three percent?
No, that's that is the the issue with.
Contributing factor.
That's a contributing factor to what is affecting the the watershed.
Well, I understand that part was failing systems or.
No, not failing, just.
Use the regular subject, yeah.
Identify yourself, please.
Tom Redburn from Als-mill. The nitrogen component, so. Actually, the phosphates.
Oh, I understand all that, but I just I was surprised by that number if it was systems that just weren't performing anymore.
It was about the same number as fertilizer.
Okay. Gotcha.
You're right, the number one cause of the septic.
What?
You're in.
Couldn't hear the rest of what you said.
Oh, for several.
Cause of like the nitrates coming out of this.
I'll solve it.
Or things like that is actually human.
Strangely, strangely enough.
Mike's fact or fiction, mostly fact?
Thing that stood out to me was that there are upgrades now in septic systems which can cost a little bit more on the front end and significantly reduce the impact that that septic system has on the water quality of the watershed.
Zero, he said, bring it to zero.
Zero, and so it's something to think about moving forward, looking at planning and development.
All right, anything else on that? What happened to the video last night? I tried to clean it and I couldn't, there was nothing online.
No, I just mentioned that the issue was that the meeting was not set up. So I was not able to click on that.
Okay.
Well, correct that moving forward.
Okay, on that. Moving on, RFPs here for town hall. Painting, just wanted to take you let you guys take a look at at the roughs on that. If you're satisfied with them and they're street state board, we'll get them over to Keisha and we'll proceed on that so we can move ahead on getting the bids coming back through on that. And concurrently, I'll hand you the draft for the floors. And we'll get these squared away and submitted, and then she'll get them published.
Anthony.
Just as far as cleaning up and sanding and priming, gonna be a good portion of it, so just wanted to make sure that that is included in this.
Okay. Those are your copies if you want. All right, next item is Catherine, you're up for your Ry Beach event.
I'm gonna pass these over. These are basically pages of the slides that we reviewed. There's a lot more complicated information that you may find interesting reading later. But the Ry Select Board hosted a meeting and invited others to come mostly in attendance were representatives and select board members from other towns. So some state representatives, select board members like myself. And the goal of the meeting was to explain what SB two ninety seven is, what the concerns are for those that are proponents of doing something different. And the point of it, to understand sort of where it came from and ultimately where it could lead us. So risk pools, the phrase being used to describe how we use insurance, how we access insurance for employees of towns is a phrase that really describes like co-op purchasing through an entity. Health Trust is the entity that we use. There's interlocal trust, there's Primex, and there's school care, which are other entities that help municipalities get life insurance, workman's comp insurance, liability insurance for structures for accidents, health insurance, dental, vision. Many of these things were contractually obligated to provide to our employees through the conditions of their employment, whether they're union based contracts or not. The way that we've been operating, I think of towns as nonprofit entities, meaning if we have a lot of extra money, that means our taxes are too high. We're not really meant to be running as a profitable business. We're really meant to be functioning as a town and basically keeping our taxes as low as possible. Schools, again, they're nonprofit entities. The Sheriff's Department, counties, they buy their insurance through these risk pools that broker coverage in the same way. So through nonprofit, so it's less expensive than it would be to buy commercial insurance. So if you're a for profit business, you're providing insurance, you're probably buying a product through a broker that is for profit and you're paying more money. So as a benefit to towns, to county departments, schools, these entities broker less expensive coverage. For health insurance, one of the things that happened is with COVID, there were excessive losses, higher payouts than say anticipated. And that left the risk pools in hardship, financial hardship situation. The history of health trust for us is that we pay premiums and we are never backcharged for an overage. They don't turn around and say, oh, geez, we didn't charge you enough to cover. You still get covered and they don't deny people. They don't say, oh gee, you have some employees with higher risks. We're not going to cover them or drop people after a year. So based on their health status. So there's been some benefits to the way the business has worked thus far. But there are also some real risks if premiums aren't hard high enough. If out of three hundred and fifty six members, meaning whole communities and entities purchasing insurance through a risk pool, if there are high losses, then that leaves the middle person. The entity that we use is Health Trust, but there's interlocal trust and others in a at a risk of being insolvent. And basically what that means is they can't afford to pay out all claims based on the premiums they've collected. So there's ways that risk is calculated. Insurance companies through the Board of Insurance have like an actuarial, it's like a scientific method for calculations of risk. Insurance companies that insure your house, your car, they're all managing risk and that's how they decide how much they're going to charge you. And what has come up with SB two ninety seven is an attempt to create more structure and accountability for risk pools. I think my understanding from this symposium is it's intended to protect members from the risk of an insolvent insurer, right? You gave me your money and now I can't pay out all claims because I can't keep myself afloat financially. Unfortunately, because of the way the math is done and the policies were worded, it left a lot of confusion about how that would play out and ultimately who would end up paying. So you might have heard the phrase self insured and self insured would be like, ooh, most of us do with our pets. We don't buy health insurance, we just keep some money in the bank and we just make sure we have cushion and if something happens, we pay for what that expense is. That's true self insurance. Once you have an entity in the middle, you're paying a premium, you're paying a deductible, maybe a copay, but they are paying out based on a contract for coverages that you need. And so some of the concerns around this particular bill were was around how those calculations were getting proposed. How much risk is too much? How much net worth, like extra cushion should the company have on hand to be able to pay out claims? Understanding that claims are constantly happening and coming in, some have been paid out, some have been incurred, but they haven't been paid out and some are yet to come. All of this costs money, including the processing of claims because there's employees that process claims. So it's a it's a business model, it has to be able to support itself. It hasn't been regulated under the Board of Insurance in the past, but potentially as this bill gets works his way through the House, it amendments might include that it ends up overseen by the Board of Insurance. What that would allow for is like the FDIC insures your money that's in the bank. So if the bank gets robbed, you're not like, too bad, you're out of luck. You know, your money, your money got stolen, you know? And so there's an idea that if it was under the Board of Insurance, there would be actuarial math that makes sense in alignment with how health insurance is normally managed. But because technically risk pools aren't a health insurance company, they haven't been falling under the purview of the State of New Hampshire's Board of Insurance. So that's one thing that could potentially happen with amendments to this bill. Another thing that was concerning is the way it was written is that the member communities would have to make up deficits based on a thirty day assessment of loss. So even though we paid our premiums in the past, if there was a shortfall, Health Trust absorbed up the shortfall and they may increase premiums next year to sort of rebuild and stay solvent, but they suffered during COVID and had a they could see how that affected them. They lost millions, as did many other insurance companies and health systems across the country. And eventually they bought what's called reinsurance. So if claims are over a certain amount of money, say two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, there's like this extra safety net of reinsurance. Prior to COVID, Health Trust didn't purchase reinsurance. So that's something that needed on their own. But with SB two ninety seven, the proposal was that towns or municipal departments would make up the difference and pay a fee. So on any thirty day basis, an assessment could be done that a high number of claims had been paid out and the amount of net profit left over in the bank, like in the savings account, if it drops below a certain amount, they would turn around to the member communities and say, you need to ante up with no other notice than a thirty day assessment. So in any thirty day period at the end of that financial cycle, a town like ours could be asked to pay up to a hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars, right, like a share that could be pitched in. The math that was proposed was based on the number of member communities and the amount of premiums being paid, some type of prorated basis. So that was proposed and that became scary for a lot of towns saying, we don't have that kind of extra money laying around. And if we did, it's accounted for in the budget. It's to pay for specific things. And we don't have the flexibility to just say, oh, forget it. We're not going to do the roadwork because we have to pay the the healthcare claims. You know, we're not that kind of entity that can deviate from what voters decided to spend the money on. Some of the language in SB two ninety seven would have that this would all be enacted as of June of this year. And so towns wouldn't have a chance to speak to the voting public about the need to have a savings fund or like an expendable trust that we we voted for and we decided to set some money aside in our budget. But many towns in New Hampshire didn't do that. There's no real cushion or place in their budget for that. So we'd be sort of as New Hampshire towns chasing our own tail around those risks. So that didn't that didn't feel really comfortable. And a number of towns that, you know, came forward to testify to have amendments to this bill if it passes, which it's likely to pass, to have amendments that would protect towns from getting hit with big assessments like that. And there's no real way to force it to be paid either because if your voting public didn't agree to spend the money, you can't spend the town's money, even if the state says now you owe this money. Right, so this, you know, this ends up legally directly complicated. And so the last little piece that I want to say that I learned at this symposium was that together, hopefully, this can get worked out so that there's more accountability for how in the entity I love the phrase risk pools, but the entity that's brokering for insurance, there's more accountability for there to be stability and not risk for claims not to be paid, but also less risk for towns to have to ante up money that that just doesn't exist in many places. And that the math, you know, a lot of the education at this symposium was about what is this actuarial math that was used to determine how much net reserve a company is supposed to have before an assessment of risk hits the members, which we are, we are those members. And so it's a work in progress and with any luck, we will end up with access to health insurance that we've promised out and be able to afford it and have some protections. But there are some some kinks still to be worked out. So it is a serious topic and it could be potentially expensive and messy. That's where we're at with that.
Okay, thank you. Wayne, what town was it when private insurance, like two years ago? And was it Green? We talked about that. They went for a year and then bailed.
I don't know about last of the year.
Yeah. What's the status of this bill in the legislature?
It was in it was in a work group today.
Was it in committee? It gone through the House or the Senate?
It's through the Senate. And it's in the House and it's in the Commerce Committee.
So it passed the Senate?
It passed the Senate.
Okay.
Yeah.
Did anybody discuss that this is an unfunded mandate from the state, which is prohibited by the Constitution?
Not in this, but yes, that is also true. And to and it's there's there's it gets a lot more complicated than an overview combined. But there's a lot of how would that be enforced? And what it would end what would end up happening is the entities that we're using to secure insurance would drop out, they'd drop out of the market, leaving us with the ball to hold. But otherwise, there there wouldn't be a way to really enforce some of some of this, you know.
I would wager the state does not have the or even force this with an unfunded mandate. That'll end up in court yesterday.
Yeah.
If they try and insist on dinging the state, the towns and municipalities for that kind of money. What was the did it was the municipal association there?
Yes, there was someone from the municipal association. And and one of the things that they talked about was the risk of entities being put into receivership if they're underneath the Secretary of Secretary of State rather than underneath the Bureau of Insurance. And what that means is it's not exactly bankruptcy, but it's when a court gets involved and decides how to say pay out on those claims. And oftentimes what will happen is a percentage will be paid, not the whole amount, you know, ultimately. And so that's not good for anybody either if it triggers a receivership.
When we were doing the budget last year, what was the number, Wayne? Thirteen, what would we get with thirteen eighteen percent?
Sixteen point three.
Three. And we had no choice in the matter. Health Trust owns municipal insurance in the state of New Hampshire. And if they're they're going to lose money, I can see them just pulling out and going.
Yeah.
Figure it out.
And if they have mandates that they have to turn around and backcharge towns, remember, they don't, that's not their model, they don't want to do that. They're actually, that's not the business they want to be in.
And what they were doing last year with the premium options that we saw, they were trying to force towns to go to highest loss coverage with higher deductibles. All right, this is a mess and it will continue to be a mess if we work our through way through into the budget.
What can we do to insulate ourselves from this? Is there anything that and is there like this might sound?
So so ultimately, right, if so, if it all falls down, we still have collective bargaining. We we are not alone. There are a number of other towns facing the same thing. So we could work together in a similar co-op fashion for purchasing insurance, but not by ourselves in collaboration with other small towns that are in the same boat because then we're a huge market, three hundred and fifty municipality, you know, entities purchasing. So we just wouldn't have the experienced entity that manages all of that. And that would that would be messy.
Anything, ladies and gentlemen? Nope, good. All right. Let's see, next thing on the agenda is we see, of course, slides from Melissa Walls in regards to catering events at Vernon Family Farm. He she forwarded, I asked her for a copy of the contract, she forwarded a copy of the contract. It's pretty black and white boilerplate, nothing specific on that.
I saw this in the email.
There, my main concern about this, I spoke to the electric commission about it. Food is not required for a catered event, which I find, when I was talking to Matt Culver, I was a little surprised by that. He said for them to have the license, it's not required, so it's kind of like, okay. In that case, the requesting an approval letter, Lieutenant Culver with electric commission had no issue moving forward, so I'll make a motion. Looking through this, we have the copy of the contract, the the boilerplate contract, and that'll be filled out, that'll be forwarded. The permit of assembly has been issued. And the last thing is a letter from this municipality. So I'll make a motion if we submit that letter. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we've gone through checks, we've got everything signed, I think, to keep the folks downstairs happy. And June meeting days. Last one is this one, twenty May. Ten and twenty four work for folks?
Twenty fourth, let me see. I think I'm going to be away.
You're going to be away that whole week?
Just see here.
Tenth is good, though?
Yes, yep. Twenty fourth, yeah, that's fine, yeah.
Ten and twenty four will be the meetings for to prior meeting minutes. Hey, you good, Cap?
Yep.
I'll make a motion, will you accept the prior minute minutes?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next thing is property tax warrant, speaking of the state coming down, sticking their hands in our pockets. This is to the collector of taxes for Newfields. In the name of the state, you are hereby directed to collect the property taxes and the list here with committed to you amounting to the sum of three million, six hundred and seventy five thousand dollars, three hundred and twenty eight and zero cents. And whatever's not paid, it's at eight percent interest. And we will pop that money up to the state whenever we have more than fifteen hundred dollars in tax receipts. So I'll make a motion, we accept that.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
So I was listening to, we talked about our property taxes, so I was listening to a blog today where the guy was saying he paid over forty to forty five thousand dollars a year in property taxes in New Jersey. And I went, wow.
Yes, New York, big.
No, thank you.
Ridiculous.
No, thank you. All right, that's taken care of. Three ninety nine, I talked to Bo Shane today. The guy that had the truck that was going to get the trailer out of there, his truck broke, so he's working on getting somebody else to do it. We'll keep going on that. I talked to the road agent, waiting to hear about when we're going to be able to clean up. He's going to be able to get up there. I'm also waiting to hear what he's going to be able to do in Clint Court on paving. I have not heard back from Brian yet, but as soon as I get that, I'll pass that information on. Ward correspondence, I would like to table that. I'm still waiting for some information from the Chair of the ZBA before we move forward on that one. So like to put that off and put that into open items. And just like to address our audio visitors, Jeff, thank you. Billy, thank you. We've been dealing with this since November of twenty three. And it's embarrassing that we haven't got it squared away yet. And it's technology and it's all the issues, so I'm not dropping dimes, but people have talked to me, he said, I click on it and I'm not getting anything. And it's the transparency thing we've talked about, it's bored multiple times. So now we have a new option that I'd like to sit down and talk with you and Bill about. And thank you for stepping up, I appreciate what you guys have done. You know, there's that old saying, how you do anything is how you do everything. And you guys have stepped right up and thank you very much. So we'll get together, the three of us, and figure out how to square this away so we can, we're not dealing with it. Because like I was texting you just now, I went to the town, it's up at YouTube, so I try and join it. And it's not letting me join. So.
So so this YouTube TV is a little bit different, so I'm a little out of the loop on that.
Yep.
I know, Mark, you met with somebody from X for.
Bob and Bill.
Looks like TMZ running some. So it looks like TMZ is running, so the meeting is being recorded right now.
Yep.
It's trans, it's just not being broadcast live. So, and we don't know. I was just a loop on that. So I, I'm a little amiss as to what's going on, but we'll have to figure it out.
I, I have no doubts and I appreciate your efforts.
New technologies to, this has to be ironed.
And Wayne, thank you for allowing him to spend all the time he does on this. But we need to get this squared away, Ricky too. All right, anything else from the board? Anything else?
I've got one question.
Yes, sir.
Do you know where those are?
I would talk to Mike Kessler.
Okay, okay.
Can you send Mike a text on that?
Yeah, we took the flags up last night.
Right, right, yeah.
Just needed the planting stuff.
Yeah, I do not know, cause I, we, when I let him in Saturday, there was a bunch of stuff in the back room there, in the old select board room. And I think he cleaned that out. Did you ask, did you ask too?
I did, yeah. Well, I was got in today. She, she had to take off, so I'm gonna make a bid and she was not. We'll have one, you know, by Saturday. Hopefully tomorrow. Like I find.
Anything, sir?
One thing that kind of follow up on what Kat said earlier in last night's presentation was, you know, through guidelines, statutes or something, new developments that are to be done in this town, new homes and things, probably should have some very simple pathways to being more safe with respect to drink. It's really water is the issue, water quality. And that would include just things like maybe some septic modernization designs, permeable driveways perhaps, or parking areas, berms, very simple stuff, not rocket science really, and respect. And that will go a long way to preventing just runoff into the rivers and would be a good way to path forward for the town.
You're not with RCCD or anything, right? And is RCCD up to speed on this? Mike Cuomo, is he, have you, has anybody spoken with him? I'll ask Mike about it the next time I speak.
Maybe lay us a little bit of that. So we are, we have school water protection in this town. People are complaining about it. It's Jeff, the instructor. And we do, we do have some pretty stringent school water protection.
I'll second that, Jeff, because it's very tight, like for muddy river and new developments.
Yeah, so you know, whenever there's a new development, we, we scrutinize that quite extensively. You know, we look for permeable surface, unpermeable surface. So we, we take a very good look at all that when we're, we're planning these new developments or there's a new commercial development going on, we, we look at that very, very carefully.
Newfields did look good and one plot was interesting was it's surrounded by towns that don't have permeability.
Right.
So this is an island of better permeability. And that would be sad to see that color change.
One of the things that's always amazed to me about this is cemeteries are hotspots. You know, for contributing. And you go, you don't get any more permeable than that, except, you know, and over time. I don't understand how cemeteries, going through Bill Merser's list, he knows all the stuff for the town. You know, you always go, the cemeteries are on there. Bill, why are the cemeteries on there? You know, and I kind of get the, why can't cows have kittens answer? You know, he's just kind of like.
I think at one point, you know, the school and the
They're still baby. Parking lot for the chickens here. We're addressing with the rain gardens.
Right.
That should be done by, is it August? We expect those to be done by August for the town hall. And while we're talking about that kind of stuff, an update, oil tanner, DES and the town, the first expenditures have gone through for the Pleasant Summer Street Engineering. And so now we've started making payments on that, which means we're eligible to get the grant money, which will cover all the engineering costs. So that is in progress. And I think March of '26, it has to be done by. So we'll see how fast that, because it's only been, what, three years? That we've been working on. That's three years in one. All right, anything else, anybody?
Streaming, we're streaming.
Just wanted to thank the great channel about send ad, facet, paging, looks like that's, they did a great job, all worked through.
I will make sure that gets passed on to Brian. He's, he's gonna work Queen Court, should be one of the next ones. And now has it turned into a racetrack, Mike? Or is everybody behaving themselves? Great for skating, somebody boarding. All right, yes, Senator Brian. All right, last chance. Anybody else? Anything?
We get a text from Lieutenant, YouTube is working now.
It did. It just came, it just popped.
Yeah. Just need to find out.
One little technology is our friend. All right. Okay. All right, I'll make a motion in that case that we adjourn the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Union is adjourned. Time is 7:35.
It's just a little snafu with, so it'll dump.